Wow.
Good to have, we're live. Okay, it is Monday, no, it's not Monday, September twenty eighth. You have an agenda for me, dear?
It's right underneath.
Oh, just next one, oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. And there is no liquor license?
Can I second it?
We've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Hurst, Ms. Lyons, you are up.
We'll start with a press release that is going out today. Uh, you'll see that we have twelve new cases in the past week, our total is at one eighty-two. One hundred and thirty-two of those cases are recovered. A total of three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight individuals have been, um, tested in Mills County, and we're standing at a six point six percent rolling positivity rate for the last fourteen days. Our current days to double is at, uh, forty-nine, and eighty-one percent of our positive cases are symptomatic, that's what they're reporting. Uh, additionally, we are, um, including in our press release, a change in guidance that's coming out today from the governor and the Iowa Department of Public Health in its regard, in regards to contact tracing, and this is a rather significant change for us. Uh, if it's symptomatic, if a positive case has a close contact, and both individuals were wearing a mask, the close contact will not have to isolate. That decision was made after the Iowa Department of Public Health has been closely tracking, particularly in school settings. If close contacts of a positive case were wearing a mask, they report, um, far less symptoms in that two-week period and are far less likely to have a positive COVID nineteen case. So what they're finding is, is that when everybody wears a mask, we are really containing the spread of disease. That's going to be a big deal, and it's going to have a big impact, particularly in the school setting, in business settings, and at community events. So, we're happy to see that change. Um, then I have just a couple of other updates for you. Let me show you another piece of paper, Lonnie, I know you love paper.
I was.
Yep, I was notified by Owen Leon, who is the Iowa Division of Accounting Management Services, that our application for CARES has passed the, um, initial review with him, and he said it's currently undergoing additional reviews, and we'll hopefully hear something in the next, in the next, um, week regarding the status of that application and dispersment of funds. Um, costs that have been incur, occurred, incurred between August first and September thirtieth, I just wanted to remind you that those, that workbook will have to be submitted by October ninth. And the balance for the next round is forty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight and twenty-four cents. As a note, um, next week I won't be here, I'm gonna be on vacation.
Wow.
And so that will, um, impact my ability to do that workbook by the ninth. So I don't know, Carol, do you wanna do the second round? Do you want me to do the second round this week?
I.
We as closely can recover it.
I was gonna say, Pat, I'm waiting for Chad to call me back, too. He hasn't called me back on the waters, water pumps, um, uh.
Could've worked closely then.
We're cursed.
Yeah, 'cause he was, he had to come and look, because he wasn't sure about the piping that are coming through, 'cause we're looking for all three forms.
One for upstairs also, Carol?
Yeah.
Um, look, are you looking at encumbering those funds with other expenses?
Right.
You're planning on using, so do you want me just to pass the workbook to you? Because I did the initial, it was a lot of public health paperwork.
Um, but what happened, okay, so, this is, I need your vote. When you're here this week?
I'm here all this week.
Okay, so let's chat on Friday, and I mean, see where we're at, and because, see if any of our expenses have come through, or one thing, and then, if, 'cause I gotta get with Patrick on some of his other expenditures, so we know exactly where we are, so then that rest just would be dropped into your, and I don't know how yours is.
Well, and additionally, it's, I'm happy to fill out the workbook for you, even if it's not labor expense, but it would be this week if you want me to.
Okay, well, let's.
We'll talk.
We'll talk.
Okay. Um, we do have from the CDC, and I just have a print copy, if anybody's interested in seeing it. So the CDC has released a playbook for vaccines, the programming that they intend to roll out. Uh, we are at Public Health expecting to get vaccine probably in the month of November. That first round of vaccine that we'll get, we are expecting will be in limited quantities. We will be giving it to, um, specific personnel, and that would be our long-term care partners. So their staff and their residents would be high on the priority list to get that vaccine. Then it would be healthcare workers who provide direct service. Then it would be our essential workers, firefighters, policemen, first responders. Um, and that would be the first round of individuals who get it, and we expect to have limited quantities. And then by the first of the new year, we're expected to have significant doses available to share with the community. Uh, I didn't know if anybody was particularly interested, but the, the CDC has released a, a ton of guidance about how the program will be rolled out, who will get it, how they'll get it, how Public Health will be the receiver of all vaccines, and then we will send them out and share them with our healthcare partners in our community. Um, I'm not expecting that Mills County will get a very significant dose, because it's gonna go throughout the entire state, and it's based on population. But for that second round, it'll have a significant impact, and we'll partner with our healthcare people to get it out in the community. And then the last thing that I just have for your review is annually, I am required by the Iowa Department of Public Health to complete an annual report, that's a service deliverable for a grant that we receive. Um, and I have the most recent annual report, and that is actually due tomorrow, but it's done and ready to send out, so, um, just for your review.
Yep, never seen this before. Very nice.
Okay.
There, Barrett's on his way up.
Oh, look at the, okay, good.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, I think when she had, had this meeting or conference call yesterday about that change within the six feet rule and mask up or whatever, that is kinda significant, more than people realizing when you think about it, uh, because as they do the tracing or whatever, that, it's going to hurt the element, uh, again, which is gonna affect people's lives, in all essence, and whether you gotta stay home or not. So, uh, so I think that's, that's one good, that's probably a good thing, let's have to wait and see how it pans out. Um, the schools have asked, uh, the state, of course, has released, releases and cloth has asked the school districts, uh, they had ordered three-day supplies, the EMA, so the Lumen District, uh, last week, uh, put a request on me, and I submitted it, and I think we'll get it this week probably from the state. East Mills has not submitted one to me yet, so I'm gonna have to hook up and see. They got the same email from the state that everybody else did, so I'm not sure why they're bawling around, so. So at least the state is pushing something out. Uh, right now, we're seeing the demand gloves seem to be the issue right now for our long-term care and, uh, our EMS services, uh, pricing, they're really, price per box is really high now, especially an extra-large glove, a tough client. Uh, we're still using our stock here to support EMS, long-term care. Like Glade Haven Village yesterday put a request in for two thousand gloves, medium and large combined. So, we're gonna try and support that, uh, to get them through this, and, uh, until the assets become more available. I've got two vendors on tap, they're gonna get with me this week and give me some pricing, and I'm probably gonna turn them loose and some of these other people, just so that they can acquire themselves, and hopefully get a, a fair price for what they've been seeing charged before. So, that's kinda an update there, and I haven't heard.
And of course, that price, if they've gotta use the money, can they do that CARES money?
Well, this is, well, see, Glade Haven said, we are, we're willing to, you know, uh, stand on our own best we can, but we gotta be able to find the material, and that's the problem. Or, uh, is, they feel like they might be getting price gouged, and it's supply-demand is what it is.
Absolutely.
So I wouldn't call this price gouge, I'd much supply-demand. So, my key thing is, is there was a vendor I have out in the west coast, and there's one in Illinois, and combine the two and see the best price of those two, and, uh, and see what can, what can be made available to them. Uh, and the, and the school is hurting, uh, for natural gloves, uh, the Lumen District has asked for a lot of natural gloves. Now, we initially put some in the nursing, and I gave some to the bus drivers and stuff, 'cause Frank Bachman wanted those for them as part of the hygiene plan when they clean the buses and drive. And, but they are getting charged pretty heavy, you're paying twenty-five dollars for one box of a hundred gloves, which is fifty pair, um, when they're probably, they're probably around thirteen, fourteen dollars probably. So that's tough for the school.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's such, yeah, surprise, surprise, right?
Um, so I, I think, uh, you know, with the vaccine, when the vaccine starts to come available, and Julie kicks point of dispensing plan in here, uh, then we figure out how you're gonna do, we're gonna do that, then, uh, hopefully we just have, we have to educate the public and let them know. And we went to this before in a pandemic, H one N one, where there was a priority on base availability of vaccine initially, who got it first, and I think the public handled that pretty well. So we're hoping this is not an emotional roller coaster when this stuff starts coming into Iowa, starts getting allocated out locally, and, uh, that we can get the word out, and then seamlessly, I hope, uh, start to administer the vaccine, and then we'll see what happens as we move forward. I don't know what the new norm is yet, I don't think anybody does. We'll have to get, probably another six, seven months and see where we are.
Is there numbers on the vaccine, is there, it's probably too early to even have any results on what it may or may not do, or what it does, or? I just wonder if it's like the flu virus vaccine, you know, you, you get the vaccine, but it may be another strain, so it doesn't work against that.
I think it's a more targeted.
Is it?
This vaccine will be more tied to flu, it's kinda like this chicken maybe in the roaster.
Right.
And, uh, that this is gonna be, I'm pretty sure this is gonna be targeted when I read, because they know what it is, they culture it, whereas flu, you're taking the best, what do we think is gonna happen?
Right.
And then they try and get the closest they can, uh, uh, with the, uh, flu shot.
So Julie, how are we gonna store this?
Well, the Iowa Department of Public Health is going to put this so that you can't, and this, this storage is gonna be an issue, especially if we get the ultra-cold vaccine.
What do we got that can dry eye?
Actually, we'd have to do it by, it's gonna be a handling issue and stuff, and transportation should get it, just like we need to one point.
So we need a tank to put this in?
I think they will come packed in dry eyes in a storage facility, in a mobile roll-out unit.
And I think you're probably gonna have to track your temps.
Sounds expensive.
As you bring it out, yeah. It's unfortunate, you know, not all one I've read are like that.
No, one is ultra-cold, and then one, one is just minus twenty, one's minus seventy. We hope we get the minus twenty. And we, we all, that one also comes in, in a lower bulk. Ultra cold, I'm gonna, I can't even remember, a thousand.
So, when you give this, you've gotta sit it out for so long, and then get a second though? It is twenty-one or twenty-eight days later, depending on which A or B vaccine that we get. Oh, so it won't, oh, so one of them.
There's two doses.
You might have to have two doses, or?
No, both of them, you will have two doses.
Yeah, and they're gonna, and they're gonna track that pretty aggressively.
Yes, they are.
Uh, to, uh, people, so they can track, and, and through a, a app on the phone, and so they can check them daily electronically, and how you feel in a day, no, they want.
No.
Yeah. It's kinda like a, a modern healthcare, like telehealth, only the other way, or, you know, proactive telehealth. So, still.
Good night.
I won't be here next week.
Oh, yeah. That's all. Have a great time.
Thank you.
Going out of state?
No. Not gonna be anything fun.
Nothing fun, clean the house.
Right.
Alrighty, the next item on the agenda is Larry Hurst, Emergency Management, request to advertise for dispatch position.
Susan, I'm also, I'm surprised you're not making it on here, but, uh, we, as you know.
Okay.
Sorry, no company.
What a slight.
Well, that's right, that's why she didn't want to come up here, if she had a company.
Right, sorry.
No, about that. Um, yes, this would be, uh, replacing one that, uh, left the center here recently, uh, which we had pre-approved, you know, to build up to, so Susan and I discussed that we need to get probably right back out there and start advertising and trying to, uh, solicit more. I think we had some other applicants that will relook at their applications that had applied the last time, the double screening, and see if it's, you know, if there's anybody there we feel that we can draw in. In addition, I think we ought to go out there, check the playing field, and, uh, look for someone that wants to get in the field, or somebody that's got some experience coming in. Our, our other new hire, she's doing incredibly well. And, and, uh, from my, you know, Susan has more direct contact with the staff than I do, 'cause I kinda come in and out, and, uh, so, um, what I'm getting to know is that she is kinda dapping well, and, uh, I think, I think she'll be good. Yeah, so, uh, uh, so that's what we're asking, is to, uh, be hired to fill a slot, and we've got a gap in right now.
Absolutely. I make a motion for Larry, the Emergency Management, to request to start advertising for a dispatch position.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Emergency Management Agency to advertise for a dispatch position. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Get her done.
Any fireworks from next year?
Not today, I hear we're burning, we're not burning anything right now.
Yeah, as of, uh, four P M.
We just had a fire down in the new engineering building.
As of, uh, four P M.
Inside or outside?
Outside. Well, I don't know for sure, but.
Um, the, uh, as of four P M yesterday, um, um, we went into a burn ban immediately, an hour after us, when Villarreal County went into a van. I mean, it's, normally Brian Hammond likes to keep up with us, so, uh, and they're, they're in a, uh, D two condition, which is moderate drought. We've been in a moderate drought this several weeks, in fact, that week, we had that little subtle rain all week, it didn't help us. And, uh, Parwani County, Cass County, Ottoman County, or three other counties within our area that are in burn bans, they've been in a burn ban for a couple of weeks now, uh, they are in a D three condition, which is severe drought condition, and I think we're, we're missing about five to six inches of rain, somewhere in that, you know, that area for this time of year. So, uh, um, and the farmers are in the fields, and, uh, and really, this is not for necessarily the farmers, it's to mitigate against a fire getting in the fields, you know, from an adjacent property, you know, ditch burning, things of that nature, or somebody's burning up something else. We did have a heat alarm fire here this weekend, uh, down off of paddock four hundred, that had started in a abandoned structure, and then it kinda got to the house, which was abandoned, which, in other words, there was nobody in it, living in it, and I think it got in the adjoining area, and it was, it was, they had, our, at Shannon, uh, Essex, Red Oak.
Grand Oak.
Grand, uh.
Really?
Tabor, which Tabor was, is part of the mutual aid we have anyway, and then we had the western departments there, you know, Henderson, Henderson, Hastings, Malvern. Of course, we have to keep resources over here, you know, in case something happened. So, yeah, they were down there about two hours, uh, from the date of time of the call, they were about two hours, and, uh, it had it under control, and then, uh, then about three minutes later, I think, man was changed to, to back to Emerson again, and, uh, and then I think they had a call out the next day or something like that.
Yeah, there was a recent.
There was a tree, uh, tree that caught fire down there in the adjacent area, and so they had to go down there and just totally check it, and that happens, a structural fire sometimes, whereas you get some flare-ups or whatever, and so then you gotta go back, and, and, uh.
Those trees are dry.
Yeah, so that's something we're gonna have to watch out for. So, uh, we have, I sent this out to all the fire departments, the cities, um, and, uh, it's basically information from the state Iowa, they came in with their proclamation to us, it's got the section on the Iowa code, and it's a form, and also this is a local forum that the fire chiefs can issue a burn permit. We're not preventing people from burning, prescribed, you know, controlled burns, but they have to get a permit while in a burn ban from the fire chief of that district. So, I last night sent an email to the cities, asking, and the fire chief saying, to get more accessibility to use, since you may have a day job, uh, maybe place some of these forms at city hall, you may place some out here, at our desk, and that way you can come in and get a form, drop it off, and then the fire chief can come by periodically and, and pick them up. Now, this will work good for the really small towns, uh, because sometimes the chief is not accessible during the day, and, uh, and the city halls is the connector, so, um, and then what will happen is once the chief signs off and then, you know, either fax it to the comm center, or, or I'm allowing him now to call in to the center, and the center will, will capture information that they would from a prescribed burn that we have in our ordinance, for an incorporated area, you know, and then we put it in our system. And then it stays as an active prescribed authorized burn by the fire chief. So, it's no different than what we do now for our ordinance firms, uh, and then once it's over, the owner is required to call back in and say, and, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so I let him, I'm letting him call in now and make it easier on the chiefs. But they've gotta issue these permits, because they don't issue a paper copy. We get a report of a burn, and we send a deputy or a fire out there, and they don't have a piece of permit, then it's he said, she said. And really, if you don't have the permit, you can get cited under Iowa code. It's a miss, it's a simple misdemeanor.
How about a fire pit?
It has to be covered, it can be no open burning. It has to be, uh, one page there at the end of that state law code, it talks about it. It means if you have a pit, you're gonna have to have wire mesh over it, I think it's one square inch is the max that the state requires, uh, and, just like in the cities, some of the code, like Lumen passed one year recently, uh, they say they have to be covered, and, uh, want that mesh, or if it's a tubular chimney type, it has some sort of screen on the top, first sparks and stuff, and, uh, and then the burn barrels, same way. The pass the burn barrels in the unincorporated area, 'cause most of the towns are not authorized anyway, um, if it has wire mesh on top of it, you know, less than one square inch, which a lot of residents live out in the country have burn barrels, and you've seen them, and they've tried to combine, they just go fire a heavy piece of mesh, and they put it on there, and, and just keep an eye on it, for, I believe it's high wind.
Go out in the middle of my driveway at the sound of a burn barrel?
We just get a little concrete fire pit, concrete block fire pit, it sits up about two feet, maybe two and a half feet.
Kinda, it'll work, yeah. So, uh, and this is just for bed, because, uh, it's just.
We have no plans, so I just ask.
Yeah, there, there is a risk right now, and, uh.
Darn, I hope we can come over for smores and hot dogs and all that.
So anyway, that's kinda what's going on right now on that, so, uh, I was, we had, we had actually surveyed the chiefs twice, 'cause the first time I surveyed them, they all said, yes, they, uh, they start raining for a week. And I said, oh, I don't believe this, so I figured I'm gonna ask them again to make sure they're in trouble, and so, uh, it took about half, two-thirds of a week to get the last chief survey. We don't have to have a hundred percent chief's approval for this, uh, but we've historically done that. It needs to be unanimous.
They're the ones that have to level this, so.
So, yeah, man, yeah.
One of the few.
Yeah, so we're hope, the biggest thing is getting the word out, and we did press, this is a press release yesterday, all the media, TV, same way we would the COVID thing, um, but it's hard. And when we put on our website, our Facebook alert thing, we put that out, and I'm gonna post it here, I've asked the cities to post them, and then maybe get them another, you know, local building, business building, but it is a hard thing to message out, uh, to public sometime, so we'll probably use Mills Alerts and that also, so.
And I don't think there's supposed to be any rain for the next two weeks.
I think it's gonna be dry for a while.
It's gonna be dry for a while, so.
But it's, but remember, it just changes about every twenty-four, twenty-eight hours, we'll have to see, uh, displays for us, but, uh, I didn't initially think here a month ago or so we would have to do this.
Do this.
Yeah, I didn't think we would have to, I thought we were gonna get some more rain.
I'm just saying, what we got is not measurable, what you get is just not.
I think it was, is there a, I mean, zero seven, oh, zero six? Maybe a little higher than that, there he is. I thought it would've been a little more than that, across the average.
These kids are always right, so you can just, this is gospel here.
Right. Which one's six, you think six is always right, you're not, you're not going with Bill Rambie? Channel seven?
I don't trust any of them.
It's a, it's an unpredictable science, it's, you can't, it's almost like.
Thirty-nine. It's made of.
Friday nine, yeah, Friday nine, it's gonna get chilly. Is it Friday?
Yeah, I think it was.
Game at home this week?
Yep.
It is.
Yeah.
Playing who?
Carol.
Oh.
So, Dennis and freshman.
We go to Dennis the next week.
So that's kinda.
They're wrong, they're wrong and non-relevant.
You there?
And it, and this burn ban would affect your fireworks permits, this girl wore that, she advised you that, and, uh, I was sitting here at homecoming thinking, oh crap, oh, I, we were gonna release that Friday, and Ashley sent an email to State Farmers off Friday.
Oh, like a terrible?
But she, uh, she didn't post it till Monday, and, uh, although she responded to me at, like, at five-thirty in the afternoon, so she must be working from home, I couldn't believe it, while it's administrating people there, but she said she, Monday we get it posted, and it was on the website, otherwise the chief had had to sign it, and then probably the fireworks, so I was just sitting there saying, I don't believe I, we almost did this, you know, so, uh.
I didn't think they were right.
So anyway, that's kinda where we're at.
Perfect.
Let's cross our fingers again, just make sure those combines don't throw out sparks.
And that's our risk, that, um, you know, and the farmers have been good about, you go out there and watch them, you know, I really love them, you know, and John Deers, the green machine, they're known in meetings, I think. Uh, a lot of the fires we respond to, you just see them be red, green in color, and, uh, if that grease in that, underneath that cab is built up, uh, and the farmer's trying to get the combine out of the field, and, and it's burning, and it's, and next thing, he needs to know.
It's spreading.
Needs to have a good exit strategy, because it's gonna melt almost, that's sad, and we don't need any of those this year, and hopefully get through harvest, and then, and then get the crops out, and, uh, 'cause everything's been going on, and minimal delays, mechanical breakdowns, and things like that.
So is the burn ban on until you say?
Until, uh, until such time, so it's, it's right now.
It looks like two weeks at least.
Yeah, we'll prove notice, and, and I kinda depend on the fire chiefs, see what they feel, and I normally use supervisor Crouch, you know, he's a farmer, he's out in the fields a lot, like you guys, and so, as a measure, as how much burnable stuff's out there, you know, which there is a lot.
These soybean fields, yeah. House of fire. Uh, my, I wanna hang fast here, I've got a report from our mental health region. We put out, uh, there's twenty-six schools that call, or, or filled out applications and stuff. They asked, the twenty-six schools asked for a total of one point one million two hundred and eighty-four thousand, and we give out nine hundred and forty-six thousand, twenty-six schools asked for things. And then, uh, we're, uh, all like, uh, initial productions, uh, family connections, Heartland Service, things like that, the big companies, they asked for one, one, one point four million, we give them four hundred and sixty-four thousand, so.
What's the type of services or material they're asking, what, what are they gonna do with it?
Well, uh, for instance, uh, some of the places, uh, needed a new washer and dryer. Uh, we put, I mean, you know, they're not cheap, so, you know, you get three thousand dollars tied up in a washer and dryer, and probably these small outfits can't afford it, but, uh, for instance, in the schools and things.
So this isn't just for COVID, this is just helping with whatever?
This is mental health money, this is the mental health part that the government says we can spend money for, or they can spend money for. The only thing we didn't cover was hazardous pay. Uh, but, uh, I'll give you like Corinda Schools, it just gives me superintendent, asks for forty-nine thousand, we give out twenty-nine thousand. Uh, Redmond Schools, uh, I don't know why they couldn't have made us, just director special ed, after ninety, ninety-seven thousand, we give them fifty-three. So, what they spend it on, this is the people we give it to that are not getting in trouble. So, we still got three hundred, almost four hundred thousand dollars left to give out yet, so, there'll be a second go-around on that.
East Mills, that's right, East Mills District, that's right, yeah.
East Mills was, they called the business manager, asked for nineteen thousand and we give them nineteen thousand.
Fifty-three thousand.
For instance, you know, Green Hills Area Education Association, I think it's called.
Yeah, it used to be Area thirteen.
Yeah, they asked for, uh, a hundred and forty-five, we give them a hundred and five, so. It's just, you know. And I sit on the policy and objectives for the state. And our four main priorities is the backfill, mental health, water, and water quality, and broadband. Stab me in the heart there for me.
You're watching.
Straighten up really quick. Okay, backfill, mental health, water quality.
Water and water quality.
Why is that water and water quality still going?
Yeah.
Your, uh, conservation people? See, they wanna, if they can get that passed, they get their, they get their money on the one cent.
Part of the penny? As long as it's written correctly.
Yeah. Cause everybody, they'll get theirs and then.
My model in my backyard should not be.
No, that's what I, the water of the US should never, should be gone.
Right.
Cause that's the same way with me. I have terraces and stuff around my.
Anything with water sitting in them, yeah.
They claim that's theirs. Well, come out and try and get it.
Come manage it.
Yeah.
I had a Golden Hills meeting yesterday afternoon and some, uh, lots of things are going on with Golden Hills. I'm very excited and very proud. Number one, they just wanna get their name more out there. They're always kind of behind the scenes. They're gonna be celebrating their fortieth anniversary next year, so we're trying to, uh, think of something for outdoorsy. They're with always the parks and the walking trails and, um, so we're gonna try to think of something along that line. If you guys have any, of course, I tapped into my family, storage container, they would like to buy one. And put it on the side, the backside of the building. So if you know of someone or such, like I got hold of my nephew to see what, what he can do. But this is, they've got a lot of things to be stored and they're running out of space as we know how those closets get filled, so. They're looking very well as far as the profit, uh, situation. Uh, lots, less, less traveling, uh, lots of visual meetings, of course, as we all know. So everybody's ready to kind of get back into norm and, uh, start picking up. They had the arts fair last weekend and that was a huge success, they said. Unfortunately, I was out in the field, so I didn't get to go, but. I think this is something, and this is their third year at it and it's growing, so I think this will be kind of a, a neat thing for Golden Hills, so.
Did they say anything to you about coming down to the, his water garden?
Yes.
Ring ring?
Okay. Yes, we're on it.
Okay. Do you have a date in mind?
You know what? Uh, Michelle was gonna get hold of Kara and see what we can get, so.
Today's Kara's birthday, so you might not get a hold of her today.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay. And that's all I've got, Lenny.
I've got a few phone meetings with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Uh, I was put on a planning and steering committee for the Mills Fremont. Rebuilding, if you will, for what we can and can, shouldn't, shouldn't do to trade a spurs of economic growth, so. We're meeting this Thursday and, uh, are you gonna go to that too, or are you?
No, I wasn't invited, but I got a, I got a small little project, uh.
Perfect.
Bring the guys to.
Send an email to me and, uh, Marco, we're working with him on.
It's, it's a Hundred and Ninety Street intersection.
I'll send you the email soon.
On Highway thirty-four. That's just west of the traffic control light intersection on Highway thirty-four. It's only got the right in and out turn. Kevin didn't repair it, um, during the flood and we talked about removing it. Cause it was just a right in and out, but Marco has since gotten with me, so there's been some interest. In keeping that around, so. It's, it, it would be at least a, a single lane replacement, cause it's completely undermined, like, might be two lanes. It's only, what, four hundred feet?
Perfect.
Yeah, I wonder why you got a stop sign there? I come from A and M the other day and.
You don't like green stuff, do you?
Yeah, you don't.
I just buy them black hogs.
Do you?
He's a goat.
He's doing A and M three times too much.
I said I watched four pickups go right through that stop sign up going, why do we have a stop sign? The road's closed here, you know, so.
Intersection.
At least it makes them slow down.
Slow down, wait me. For the DOT and the weight enforcement and the troopers were running thirty-four yesterday. I mean, you didn't, once you, you had to weave in and out, going down the road, they were, they was stopping that much traffic.
They were.
Oh, yeah. Well, they got, we got such speeders, see, it's supposed to going up past Joel's house, he cuts back to fifty-five. And they're, they're doing seventy-five when they hit two lane.
Oh, yeah.
I was a mile away and watched the patrolman pull out of Eldon Smith's driveway and throw his lights on. I don't know, probably talking to Eldon.
Did he have to pay?
The weight enforcement was on over the hill, had somebody stop. County Mountain was chasing somebody going west. I'm going, I'm going home. I'm getting off this, yeah.
I did drive on the public city road on Sunday. So it's still uneasy.
Just doesn't go far enough, sir.
Oh, can't wait.
You playing it off, what else?
My, my concern though is.
Shoulder's undone.
Once that farm equipment starts rolling on there, what's it gonna do to it? You like that? That's not his road. That's not his road.
It is nice.
Is that all related now?
No, we got, uh, south, southbound still needs to be completed. They broke down on Saturday.
Oh, that's the deal.
No, they're working for the state. State pays better than we do evidently.
Broke down Saturday, Sunday moved to council blocks, so then they'll be back hopefully Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
What are they doing today? They're stopping their traffic.
Overhead.
Uh, we have shouldering and.
And then people flying out, you know, bumps slowing down.
I was gonna say, I saw them stopping as I was coming off of the stop light on the hill.
It's, it's nice once you hit, you know, from doing this and then it's smooth, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
The town's ready. The town's ready.
Well, you know, I had somebody from their town come in the other day and he wants to incorporate and I said, no, we don't want that. You guys just need to get your government together.
That's Silver City.
Yeah.
Hastings is still clicking alarm?
So far, I'm not sure how well, but so far. I don't know. We're worried about that one too.
You're bad. A recent request of, uh, nine-one-one numbers for Hastings inside the town, so. Somebody in Hastings needs to figure out how to, uh, assign nine-one-one numbers or addresses.
People are moving.
In the city limits. Yeah, it's their responsibility.
No, but I mean, they can put nine-one-one numbers, not just addresses?
Same thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, everybody's gotta have a nine-one-one number.
Do that in towns.
Well, you have addresses in cities. I mean, like, this street, that street, blah, 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 and then, and a number on your street.
Address, I don't remember, yeah.
Turn a few gas and farm and.
Moving into Hastings?
Okay, this is, okay, I, I'm just.
There's been three requests for.
Fantastic.
And each time we're like, no, you have to talk to the city council or city clerk.
Hastings is growing.
Wonderful.
Anyways.
Okay.
Back to business.
Utility permit report. We have no utility permits to report. Um, waiting on two, uh, application fees, so should have a couple next week. And my only action item is approval of hire for our open labor truck driver one position. We have made a selection. He's passed a pre-employment physical and drug screen, named Nick Randiris from, uh, Pacific Junction.
You have a letter there, right?
I made you copy already.
Thank you.
No, we're looking at start date on Thursday, October first, at a starting wage of eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents an hour.
And he'll be doing what?
He will do, um, uh, labor truck driver. He'll be with one of our ditching crews, um, under Johansson supervision.
When you say eighteen, what?
Eighteen dollars, twenty-seven cents.
This is starting. This is a.
That's the starting wage. That's the union starting wage, so not allowed to change for, change. Looking for approval for the hire.
I'll make the motion that we hire this Nick Randiris.
I second it.
We've got a motion in a second to approve the hire of your truck driver labor position. Is there any other discussion? Do you have a background on him, or their previous jobs and stuff?
Yes, he's worked, we have, uh, worked for Hughes, um, where he got some experience with some of the concrete saw. Jackhammer, tractor mower equipment, um, that was appealing. He's also worked for Stouders, so.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing that all is in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good luck.
This goes to general discussion, um. Start with, uh, our Elphet Five project. We've been here a little earlier, but I've been dealing with the state, uh, about some testing for, for our roadway. So we had to cut cores and test them, um, on the surface layer. And that requirement is you do five hundred tons in a day. And we did seven hundred tons before they broke down Saturday. I said I wanna waive this testing because the other lane was great. We had good, no, no errors in field voids, which is what we test. Field voids, make sure it's compacted. And we're so close to that limit where you have to test. I don't want eight holes and shorter than a mile stretch. And so right now, we've been, I'm gonna go back to the office after this and call another person from the state saying. I believe I have the authority by spec twenty-two, three, da, da, da. We don't, I can waive it as the engineer, but, um, their technician was saying, well, it has state money on it. And she's trying to tell me the engineer was district engineer. I said, that's not correct because project engineers, county engineers, so. Little just, not diplomatic, but some testing stuff to take care of, but I.
Sure.
I just don't wanna have eight cores and four thousand feet when we, the other, the other lane was, was fine. Testing was great and, and the Western's a really good company when, when it comes to the asphalt line, so. Otherwise, that project, while they're in the, the breakdown on Saturday, it's been going well, um. Shouldering.
We put in there for lifts.
We had a one-inch leveling course, um, which overran because crown on the road. Previous crown wasn't, wasn't the two percent. It's old, beat up and, as you can tell, it's bumpy. Um, and then we put in a inch and a half inner layer, that flexible inner layer, that's to try to prevent the cracks to reflect through. And then we have a two-inch surface, um, course.
Nothing huge, yeah.
So four and a half inches, four inches.
That can handle the truck traffic for a while, huh?
So we'll.
We'll know in two years what you should do for the next part.
We'll, we'll go.
There's no way we can speed that process up for finishing.
We'll, we'll have it, if we can have a let and be at the very beginning of fiscal year, which would be. June or July first of twenty twenty-one, that would be sooner than April of twenty twenty-two. We're just looking at that fiscal year, so.
Let's see if they let us have our money. Two people from the Landville call me, you know, they're wanting to pave their road and stuff. We have a real problem with the cost of the engineering. I, I'm just asking your opinion. I, I don't know that much about it, what it consists of or.
They gave me a call, said, hey, what do we, what do we need to show for plans for paving this road? So it has to have an engineer stamp on it. It's still a public road. Probably who's gonna be more stringent about it is gonna be the state because you're gonna be working inside the state right of way. Abiding Highway thirty-four and they're gonna request the plans when you turn in your permit to work inside the right of way. So state's gonna make you do not a full set of plans, but something that's engineer and certified by engineer.
Who's that up?
Landville Road.
Yeah, 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 you're, you'll be inside the right of way.
I, I don't know what they, what, you know.
I, I gave him a couple samples set of plans and I said, you don't need this, you don't need a plan profiles sheet, um, because you're just gonna be going five hundred feet.
So you're gonna say the right of way, you can do whatever they want.
And that's, that's the thing, it's like, it's, it's a public road right now, so we can't just let you do whatever. We still have to have a set of engineered plans. I, I tried to take out, I'm like, don't need to worry about some of this stuff. It's under an acre, so you don't have to worry about a stormwater pollution prevention plan. It's, uh, like I said, the profile's not gonna change, so don't have to worry about showing me a profile. I, I tried to, to limit it as much as possible, but the state's gonna wanna see, uh. Layout radius information there at the, at the intersection.
Anything inside the right of way, they're gonna.
And it's only five hundred feet and then it.
Seven, seven hundred feet, he told me.
Yeah, with the right of ways, only got a DOT for two hundred, hundred fifty.
But it's also, it's still a public road.
Do they, do they go back to old thirty-four yet?
Yeah, we'll make it passed.
No, I mean, does, does the state right of way go back to old thirty-four?
To Jurd, uh, I'm not sure.
Who would the Vika, Vika always write when it comes to this?
Yeah, I try to dumb it, I mean, not dumb it down, but eliminate some of the things.
You're right there.
Jurd Avenue and. Cause it, it dog, it used to come.
We're gonna move this one.
And I, I even gave a heads up.
Put it right there where your arrow is, where they're gonna put the road.
That's where they're gonna put the road.
No, they're gonna use what they have, right? They want about seven hundred feet, they figure the dust won't get to the highway by then.
Got it.
If you go seven hundred feet, that'll put it down here.
That's what they, that's what he told me. They're gonna go back seven hundred feet.
We still plan to vacate the road once, once, uh. Once they take ownership of the other, uh, lots.
Would, would seventy thousand dollars be sound about right or would it be seven hundred thousand?
For the engineering or for the, the pay concrete? For the engineering or for the, the pavement?
Oh, they wanna do concrete.
Oh, it's gonna be concrete.
Oh, they're not gonna.
They told me, they told me asphalt.
They're not gonna asphalt it.
Oh, no. But maybe they're looking at concrete.
We might have to go back and argue with them because I believe at the meeting that night, it was supposed to be concrete.
Because it could handle the trucks better?
With concrete?
Uh-huh.
Oh, yeah. And they might, might have to run it eight to ten inches deep, but. You know, they, they made, um, I just have to go back and look at the minutes of the board meeting that night. You know?
You know, they, they could avoid. If we abandoned the road before they pave it, they could avoid some of these engineering fees, um, because it'd be a private road then, but.
Because of that.
But since it's still a public road.
Sitting there.
It needs to have something to hear your plans.
Well, why would there would be, be anything wrong with abandoning it before they do it? Would that, I mean, would we lose our control of saying they had to do it, or would we have to have a new agreement?
We would lose our control of requiring it. Unless you, unless you could with the conditional use permit, I don't, which I'm not sure how much power that allows you. I mean, that, you can make, you made borrows, put in paved approaches.
That would be an idea, abandon the road.
Anything to help them out, I mean, it's.
And then they could go do their thing.
I imagine they'll still need a set of engineered plans for inside.
Highway thirty-four right away, they will have to have something, they'll have to.
Lonnie, would it, that, uh, Jordan, uh, Jordan or whatever avenue, that's old thirty-four. Okay, would the state still have ground south of that? You see where, where.
Who maintains it?
Well, county maintains it right now.
Didn't they give that up?
This is all just right away, it doesn't tell you whether it's state or, or, or county, but. But I would imagine that the highway thirty-four right away is here, I'll bet you it does something like that at the least.
I thought maybe they still came to old thirty-four.
Then they, they very well could, they very well could, without pulling the plans up, I couldn't tell you that, but.
Cause I, if I remember right, when Emire had this done.
Anything inside that highway thirty-four right away will have to be engineered, stamped, sealed, planned, you name it, all of it.
I, I've talked to DOT, talked to Wes about it already.
And there's no way to get around that, it's just, it's just something they'll have to do.
Control Jurd Avenue?
No, they, they're just.
Done.
No, they will require a set of engineered plans for working side, for paving inside the right away, state right away.
They gotta, they gotta play with the rules.
I, like I said, I, I've tried to. Get it as low cost as I can for them, but it's the public road, and it, as long as it's a public road, we, we need to have a set of engineered.
Spend hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on engineers, they can handle that.
I. I would imagine it would. Probably cost twenty thousand dollars for a set of engineered plans.
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta add about seventeen.
Ten anyway, it's not twenty.
They, they told me it's gonna cost them thirty-seven thousand to have that little chunk engineered. Which they thought was kinda outrageous, which I, I think it is, but I don't know what.
Another engineer.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know what.
I gave them three different firms who've done work inside Mills County, so.
Wow.
I don't know.
Just with their. Damn.
The, the state doesn't want any Tom, Dick and Harry out there laying asphalt or concrete right up next to their road and their shoulders and everything else, I mean, you get a. It, it, it has to be done, there's, there's, there's no way around it.
You're looking at ensuring that the base can handle it, so it's your technical exploration, you're looking at radius calculations to make sure that you.
Those sides.
Correct turning radius, you have depth of concrete or asphalt, uh, calculations, I mean, it's not. Uh, it's not just go out there and.
Turnoff lane needs to be redone also, with a lot of people.
Don't realize how much is into it.
They probably should extend that turning lane down to it, you know, turning lanes should do something like that.
Yeah.
Whether it's six hundred feet or not, it's. No, it needs to be deceleration.
That's state thing.
Right, right.
Oh, I'm sure.
Off of the state highway.
Well, I think it should be that way, just for safety purposes, cause you got the one that goes into, uh. The housing development, and, and they're, right now, their turning lane starts right across the road from that, that's where everything gets bottled in. Cause you got, somebody wants to turn into the housing development, semi's wanting to turn off and they're just not quite there yet, so.
Yeah.
So true.
Anyway.
Well, off the Jeremy marble on that one, right?
Hmm. How soon we getting our disc? And you guys are gonna be over abundantly busy with tearing up roads.
I, I'll check, I, we may have already got it delivered because it was. We got, we got both, the disc and the floor planer, yeah. Uh.
There is some rock roads, these maintainer guys, if they go out and pull the shoulders down, they're gonna have a winnow as big as this table. I'm serious, I mean, if they pull them like they're supposed to, cause they haven't mowed and they haven't done their full width bladey.
Reclamor back out?
The seal coat reclamer, or the.
Gravel.
I, I think we did get it, I, I'm not sure, but I know, uh. Our, our cat dealer has had it ready for us at, at Atlantic, so I'd gotta imagine he already got it. We've had, we've had multiple blades up on H twelve for our seal coat reclamation, so, so, uh, they haven't been in their own districts.
That's where you've been.
And, and so. We'll get them off, we should be done with that tomorrow, if not today.
Well, that'll be nice, cause like, I agree with Richard, when you've got those big humps and you're trying to get that combine or the green wagon, it just, I mean, it truly throws you off. Yeah, that'll be great. Chew it up.
Uh, briefly mentioned the Hundred Nineth, Highway Thirty-four intersection, yeah, if you wanna, Lonnie, forward me that email and I'll.
Hey, I did, you make sure you, make sure you got it.
And then I'll. I'll kinda fill that in with detail. Talked about seal coat, talked about old fifty-five, uh, Vogel paint companies in, some paint striping.
Where?
Uh, countywide, um, about sixty miles.
Straight angle would lane, yeah.
Huh?
It's straight angle would lane, yeah.
That one, that one didn't make the project list. Um, got a call from Wes of DOT this morning, they're, they're painting on Highway Thirty-four today, so.
Yeah.
Looks like we coordinated, look at the county, state working together.
Yay.
And I know it's gonna happen, one of us is gonna stop too far or too short from the Highway Thirty-four intersection and.
Yeah.
Somebody's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be, that's yours. We'll see. Um, oh, I wanna give you guys a heads up about.
Oh, no.
Uh.
Is this gonna be costly?
This would save us a lot of money.
Okay.
If we get selected, there is a build grant, um, application that the Iowa County Engineers Association. Were all, every county's supposed to submit a bridge for this, um, build grant. Um. They don't know how much money is gonna be in, uh, available, there's a maximum of twenty-five million that the state counties could receive. Uh, it's part of this build discretionary grant that's, uh, that's given a billion dollars to all the states. And twenty-five dollar, twenty-five million can be used, um, at a max for state counties, so. We don't know. B U I L D discretionary grant. So, the state county engineers association's working together, every county's submitting one bridge. Um, they didn't really give us a lot of criteria on what bridge to submit, so, um, the biggest criteria. Is, is that it can be completed, um, in two years, so, doesn't. Not something that's the next year, railroad right away, not, you know, things that will prolong the project if you have to purchase a lot of right away, if you. If it's not gonna pass NEPA clearance quickly, stuff like that, um, tried to, I made a selection, uh, that. It, they also wanted something that's on county five-year plan, the only bridge that would be long enough, because they also said probably. Needs to be over a hundred fifty feet long, the only bridge that we have on our five-year plan that's over a hundred fifty feet is on a road that has thirty-five cars a day traffic. It's on M twenty-one just south of Anderson. So, I'm worried that our low ADT might, might not make the cut, but it's really about our best, our best selection. So, the reason I need to bring it up though, is county associations will go through the pool. Probably ninety-nine bridges, so far they've only had twenty-five applications, I imagine that will go up quickly. Uh, that's a deadline comes here in the next couple of days. Um, they'll select the, I can't remember how many they said they'd select, but then they'll hire a consulting firm to complete the application. For, for all the counties, and that consulting firm costs, um, the counties selected will have to be responsible for splitting that up. Probably look, they just said ballpark, a hundred thousand dollars, give or take, you know, ten, twenty thousand dollars, so. Split that between ten counties, that ten thousand dollar consulting fee, um, and so they just wanna make sure the boards are aware of that. And that the county selected, they agreed to still pay the consulting fee even if we don't get any grant money. And then there is also gonna be a twenty-five percent local match for the project, federal dollars will only pay up to seventy-five percent, so.
Still, you need to do like that twenty-five percent, that's.
I think it's a home run, we, I just wanna make sure you guys are aware, because we, we can find, we can find some match money for that when, when you're getting.
A new bridge.
Eight hundred thousand dollars, we, we can find. Something else, yep. Um, but just so, so you guys are aware, I'm not real confident that we'll get selected, but who knows? Yep, so.
Well, since they had specification, darn it, I mean, there's always some bridges somewhere that you could replace or redo, but it's.
Yeah, that was Kevin's.
Gotta be so big.
That was Kevin's goal, though, to, to replace all the big bridges before he left.
Kevin did, did a lot of the bridges, and it's reflective in our bridge, uh, our HBP, uh, fund, that's why we. We're, we're still two and a half years, uh, out of it, which I'm glad he got some of those big bridges done.
Right, I mean Lambert's done, Hundred Ninety, Hundred Ninety's done.
And sixteen, he had greenish, greenish crossing, so, and the one I picked is.
Randolph.
Anish tributary, so.
Yeah, we're in pretty good shape.
So, that's.
Well, good, and how soon will you know on that, or do they not tell you that?
Deadline's Wednesday, tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, I, I just need to finish a narrative on the application, um, and let's see. They didn't really give us a deadline for when they'd make the selection.
Okay.
But it, it'd be, it's gonna be a quick turnaround, cause these have to be turned in by May, so. To, to, uh, the federal government, so. This has to be turned in tomorrow for the county, and then if we get selected through the state, then.
He has paperwork.
It'll be turned into federal government by May. No, it is, each county picks one bridge and the state will choose the best ten, fifteen.
Is this something new?
Yes.
Wow, that's cool. Glad you found that.
Yeah, they, they were pushing it out, so that's, so. I, I swear, I, I thought I saw them say how many they thought they would select, but they didn't really.
Hit the run button to cross the number, it's probably. I mean, obviously.
They want, they want, they want larger bridges, so, I would imagine probably two million dollar cost per bridge or, or roundish, so, twenty-five million.
When do we need, when do we need the number from Stouter on the plump for the waters?
Um, it's yesterday.
Like from now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't really say that needs to be turned in. Soon.
I, I just said the end of the day.
Thank you.
That's all I have, you know, if you guys were gonna take a break.
Yeah, the next thing on the agenda is nine forty-five, so we'll see, alright, it's nine forty-five. Morning. Next item on the agenda is Corey Lake, Ryan Fink, uh, is it Fink? Think he, uh, like construction, Joe's here with him, to discussion of flood recovery, so come on up, guys, scooch in if you want. Yeah, you can just roll your chair in, yeah, you can just roll your chair in.
Okay, we.
What's up, guys?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
It's Lonnie. Well, Lonnie's real good.
Richard Crouch, Carol Robertson, Larry Hurst, Tyler, County Attorney.
And you look familiar, but I can't.
Joe Mark.
Joe Mark.
You're a good phrase.
He stays young.
Yeah. He does, I'm.
He stays young, we all look a little older and balder.
I'm old on the inside. There you go. What's up, guys?
Okay, so today we wanted to have a meeting, we, we were all kind of on our own little projects on Thursday, or I'm sorry, Tuesday of last week. Um, so we sent Jenny up here from our office, Jenny said there was quite a bit of conversations and a lot of, um. Difficulties maybe with the bid, so, on Thursday of last week, we got put on the agenda so we could clarify anything from our bid. That you guys may need, or if you wanna talk about our company at all, um, you know, there was. One thing that got sent that I'd like to, uh, address is, is our bonding capabilities statement in our sheet was one thing that, once I saw the packet they put together. It's, it was a little inaccurate, that, that bonding statement was for what we thought maybe the job may go for, but our bonding capabilities for our company. Is over eighty million dollars, and that's our aggregate, so what that means i- as an aggregate is. Our bonding company trusts us and believes in us enough to where we could do roughly a hundred of these jobs concurrently, all at the same time, so.
At your cost, right?
At, at, at the bid cost, uh, we could do a hundred of them at the same time, so, meaning, uh, which is quite a bit, in, in our opinion, I mean, we've worked hard to get our bonding up to where we are. You know, our equipment handles that bonding, rarely would we do a hundred, eight hundred thousand jobs all at the same time, but, um, we do. Yeah, I would really look for life, okay, I don't have many people that don't tell me that anymore, but, um, so that's kinda, that's kinda where we're at, um, you know, if we. We put down our references on there, we put down our past experiences in different areas, we, you know, we have multiple, multiple other ones that we can put down, but we. Kinda pick and choose what we thought were some that maybe fit the project in our eyes the best. So, I don't know if there's any questions for us, or, um, like I said, this is Joe, Joe is our construction lead, so Joe's. The one that makes sure that all the foremen on all the jobs and stuff are doing what's, uh, supposed to be done, Ryan is our head estimator and, uh, Ryan. You know, can let you know where we came up with the dollars amount on it, Jenny, of course, was, uh, a lady that works at her office and. We couldn't come here, so she came up here and, and was here for the meeting, so, like I said, we, we thought it'd be good to be put on the agenda if you. We were, I don't know if any, if anybody else was here or not during the bid opening, but we, we, we needed somebody here for the representation, I thought.
Alexis, Terry, you guys have any questions for, right off hand, or?
No, not right off hand.
Down.
There's been a couple of things that were brought up, so I may ask a couple, if that's alright.
Okay.
Um, the trainer state bank job, um, did you guys do any demolition there, what did you do on that job? It was listed as one of your. It was listed as one of your references or?
You know, we, we'll let's see.
Roggy.
It's Roddy?
Roggy. Trainer school?
Trainer bank.
Trainer bank.
Trainer bank.
Yeah, okay, this was for Roggy. Yes, it's, uh, it's the bid package one point three, the bid package is earthwork and site demolition. Which one's that one? Well, that's right. Okay. Okay, this is the contract from them and our bid portion. Uh, removal and demolition of a portion of the bank building, removal and haul off of all footings, concrete, excavation and grading. With, uh, a lot compaction for the above structure, remove excess soils and erosion control, yeah. So this was a few years ago, the north side and the west side of the building had adjacent walls where they were adding, I believe, a new, um, um, drive-through area on it. So we did the demolition on that, which was very interesting and I think, is this one we put down that was critical, the critical thing? Uh, this is the one where we, uh, we demoed it, why they were had banking hours the entire time. And most of the demolition, since they doubled up their building, they actually went all the way down, so they had footing grading and they went down, I believe, another X amount of fee for a basement grade. The footings went entire with the, with the whole building. So we had to demo off the side of the building, um, and, you know, create a big, big open hole right next to the, um, existing building. They actually brought in seismologists as we were doing it because there was such impact that some of the neighbors, some were making some weird claims that. Uh, they were having issues with pictures falling off their walls and stuff like that. But when we spoke with the bank, we didn't have a drywall crack, we didn't have anything, they were able to stay open the entire time. And we put traffic control around so that they could actually have a makeshift drive-through at the same time. So, yeah, that one, oh, and then. And then, uh, the, the footing company, which I don't remember who that was, be, these are big footings because it's, it's supporting a, I think it's a three-story bank. Um, they got installed incorrectly the first time, so then we had to demo and remove all the concrete footings as, as a change order to our contract, um, for that. And then we had to recompact, we had, uh, we actually removed the rebar and the footings. And we're a compaction and of all the disturbed soil and bring in soil to fill that in.
So you had to come in and repair a mistake?
Another one, that was a change order.
I remember.
Well, and.
Bankers are saying, oh my god.
Yeah, it took a long time.
This is a nightmare.
Yep, it was, and it, the footing deal turned into, because those footings, when I say the footings were big, they, they might have been half the size of this building. So there's a lot of hammering and there's, it was a, it was a pretty, uh, intensive, um, jackhammer and removal. Nothing really pulls those things out very well. Yeah. And that took a lot of fill, um, which, so like on this one, the way I look at this one, uh, how it adheres to the projects is that, you know, the, there's a tremendous amount of concrete in this demo bid. I mean, most of this bid is removing foundations, punching holes through the, but the concrete floors, hauling off that material, septic tanks, a lot of things, you know, you, there's utilities. Um, there was a utility line in this thing that I believe had to get capped off and, I don't know, there's, this turned into a big job. Kept getting change orders, we ended up demoing a whole parking lot and putting in a permanent paper system, so I think that's how we fit this one into this project.
I think it's on two hundred and thirty-seventh street, you demoed a two-story house, attached garage. And brought in, uh, well, I suppose what you call backfill material. Any, any questions on that already?
What'd you do, what'd you do on it?
Well, that was, oh, Judy Flanagan gets bombed, uh, Maxine Techow, Maxine Techow used to live there. Maxine Techow, that's your job.
So that one, we basically just took everything, smashed it all inside of the footprint of the house. Um, with the county's approval, we burned what was, what was remaining from the wood and stuff in there.
Is that what Jenny printed?
Yeah, there should be a couple of pictures that I had from doing it. Um, and then there was, there was six outbuildings on the, on the property and then we ended up taking down three and keeping two, took down four and kept two.
So it was an old house, actually it's right across from where the farm school was, that Lidle Farm School, if you remember that, right, not it. Richard, you might remember that, but you were on the, you were a little bit different area, but, yeah, we, uh.
What was your address on that again, Richard?
Five one four nine eight two hundred and thirty-seven.
Yeah, that's the old house that we removed.
That's the one you removed?
Yep, yep, that one's gone and there's a new house there, it's about.
So if you zoom in, I can show you the, that shed, that barn there, that, that was demoed. Those two sheds off to the left-hand side, both those were demoed and then the house. Yep, that was completely demoed, there's another small shed off to the left there that was demoed and then the one that's right behind the house, we kept that one and then that one stayed. Yeah.
I was just taking, was he working that day?
Don't, don't look, hopefully they don't have that day.
But that was probably, we probably, I would assume, right, we use that one just because that's probably an average-sized house with buildings and just kind of reflected some of the bids.
You did this through building zoning too, you worked with them on it?
Yep.
You see, you put a new house up after that?
Yeah, it's, it's about probably eighty to ninety percent done now.
Okay. Carol, you have anything regarding those?
Um, I guess I, just one of the questions, Corey, that, um, I'm very proud of you of how you've built yourself to where you're at now. I, I mean, we've known you from here and now you're, you're there. Um, so now that you've got a hundred and ninety-two houses to demo. Can you supply your time?
Ninety-two, he doesn't have a hundred and ninety-two. What's, what's PJ you have?
PJ's, I think around a hundred and thirty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got the, my numbers, okay.
PJ's is a hundred and forty-eight and then if you add a few more that might come back on, so you're about a hundred and fifty-five.
So you add now our exact number out in the country, county, Carol, exact number.
We're about sixty-nine right now, but, yeah. But there'll be a change order here, some of those will come off because of the people that have stayed.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm concerned and I know I've been reassured, but is this going to be? I mean, how are you gonna do all these in that ninety-day window type of thing? Is this going to be hard, is this going to?
Well, what we, what we have is, uh, many different crews. Uh, we have one crew that's getting off a pretty substantial-sized job now, uh, and they're, but, but they're both a little bit different types of means and methods. The Pacific Junction job is gonna, you're not mobilizing to each unit. So that's an area where we're gonna use multiple dumpsters and we're gonna use smaller equipment because the homes are much more easy to remove. There's not a lot of foundations, it's a lot of C and D, construction debris or ma- materials and stuff like that. There's concrete floors in some, but it's more heavy on the dumpster type work. We're also gonna use a tipper-type truck where we can contain a lot more. So that's, that's a whole completely different crew than the crews that have to go out to these individual ones to take larger equipment because there's so many foundations. And this is where we'll implement a lot of our site dump and dump truck use. So it's, the people won't even be in a mess, one crew will do one, uh, and another crew will do another. So in the, and both of these jobs, you know, some of the jobs I put in there was dollar amounts, so we're looking at a four hundred thousand dollar plus job in Pacific Junction. And I think this was eight hundred thousand dollar plus job here and the timeframes that are allowed for them, uh, are pretty simple compared to what are, some of the other jobs we put in our rep and were eight hundred thousand dollar jobs. Concrete removal here, whatever the removal may be, um, they kind of fit the same type of, of, uh, oh, I guess, format that we plan on using for this. Like the, uh, the high school, uh, or not the high school, but this, the. The track, you know, that tremendous amount of asphalt and concrete and different pieces there underneath the track.
Was there any buildings on the track project?
Just, just a small, just a small little one, there's just a small little white one. But we looked at that and used, and the dirt that we brought into there as a good comparison of cubic yardage of concrete. And that type of material as how much concrete we're gonna take out of the homes, like on Canes and Carnes Road. And that's how, you know, that was about an eight hundred thousand dollar plus job, change orders, of course, that turned into a long exposed deal with dirt coming in. And it kind of, that, that's where we used the example on, that one was, that's a cubic yardage of concrete and soil going in, Canes and Carnes Road. That's about, you know, similar type stuff, same, similar amounts of concrete, rebar, tough footings to remove, so that's kind of how, that's what we used for that.
And I don't think PJ's closing, planning to close that many houses.
No, it's. At a time. They have almost.
Like ten at a time.
How, how's that work, or Terry, I guess this question for you too, is it a, let's say we buy the property tomorrow. Is it, does a ninety-day start immediately after closing?
Yeah, the, the ninety-day starts the minute the house is closed on, the county takes possession of it. So effectively what we're saying is demolition won't necessarily start right at that time either, uh, because for the properties that are, uh, that need to be, uh, abated first. Uh, that timeframe has to, you know, take place once closing starts or once closing happens. And so then demolition will have, will occur after that. So the ninety days not, will not always necessarily be ninety days that is given to that contractor to, uh, demo the property.
We have ninety days, they don't.
We've had it, yeah, we've had it to where in some cases they get the full ninety days if the property is clean. Um, but, and we've had it in other cases where they've been given three days to take it down. I mean, there, there's just those, there can be those, uh, deviations in there. Uh, we've framed work this entire project as well as the Pacific Junction project that we're front-loading everything. Uh, so that the services can start immediately once closing happens. So that way it's, it allows that demo contractor the ultimate amount of time that we possibly can give them to get that property down. Because there is no, there is no half ninety-day mark that we're even going to discuss at the time. Uh, you know, we, we are going to shoot for hit that ninety days, uh, at every given point that we can.
I, I agree, right. Yep, yep, makes sense.
For your knowledge, I know, I think we talked about it either Monday or last week about how many properties, aspects of material was found in, and I think it's around ten to twelve. So it's not, not far not a majority of the properties. Uh, but there will be certain properties that come up that the, the time crunch will be a lot more real. Then, you know, the full ninety days, but I will do my best with those to, uh, intersperse them and not get contracted with, you know, and that's, that's a property that all of them.
Right, right.
I guess, Carol, another answer to your question is, we are, I don't believe we are, but we, we are definitely in the top three largest private companies in the area. We have some of the most employees which have a lot of longevity with us. Um, we have different, we have dispatch areas, we have more equipment than I believe any other contractor, um, in this area. And we also have a bonding company, which is more important than anything, in my opinion, in the, the, the way bonding company works, that believes that if they would honor us one hundred of these properties. Or one hundred of these contracts at the same time, they believe we're gonna get it done, which, at the end of the day, the bonding company is what is.
If you don't get it done, then your bond will take care of it.
Exactly. So, I mean, this is just one and we're bonded.
I'm learning a lot of construction, even though the bid dabble in it, I, I'm learning a lot from, from you guys, so that, that makes it clear.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You have any other questions for him, Richard?
No, I'm good.
Carol, Larry, Tyler, does anybody have any questions? We're not gonna close on ninety of them in a week or ninety in a day. Tyler, can you do ninety closings in a day?
Didn't you say, Tyler, you're eighty-five a week?
Trust me, I, I, I won't let ninety happen in one day. It, it's not happening.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
The, the biggest thing that I always want to stress though, to that point is holding back on demoing properties based on, uh, uh, location. So never do I want to, never do we need, want to kind of lump these together. Uh, so you're holding off on demoing, say, these two properties over here, waiting for these other two properties to close. Because that snowballs. Significant with it, so I always, even, even though it may cost a little bit more for, uh, to go out to the site. You know, we always want to make sure that we're staying on top of each individual property in case, what, what we've seen in the past is if you're trying to lump them together, which is a great thing to do and it's a cost saver and we understand that. But we've always seen where if you're waiting on this one property to close before you mobilize out to the site to demo all the properties, inevitably that property gets delayed. I mean, it's just, it seems to happen and that's where your ninety days comes in, come into play is if you're waiting, you know, twenty, thirty days to mo- mobilize for these three properties over here because you're waiting on this other property to close. And it, and it gets delayed for whatever reason, then, you know, you, you're up, you're bumping yourself up against a wall.
I agree with Terry, what, and, and how that affects us is we have in the, you know, fourteen, eighteen, twenty, I'm not sure exactly, excavators, two low-boy trucks. Like I said, we have eighteen trucks that can haul away materials, so we're full aware of that and that, and I'm, I'm glad he brought that up because in PJ, that's why the bid is less than PJ per home. One reason besides the wells and stuff is that we're able to crawl down the roads in, in a sense, we're not re, putting them on a truck. But we have enough ma- machines, skid loaders, you know, twenty-five, thirty skid loaders, stuff like that that we can leave. We, we don't, we're not, if we're using two excavators in this job, we still have possibility of seven or eight sitting somewhere else that aren't getting used on another project. So that doesn't, in our opinion, it doesn't affect our issues at all. And we try to limit everything to where we don't use public access, as we would use onsite so that when all the demo, the truck loading and that stuff, the only thing that was coming out of those sites would be the truck. So we wouldn't be hopefully using the facilities. There's also gonna be neighbors that are, that didn't take the buyout that are gonna be upset that this is even happening, um, on Canes and Carnes.
There's gonna be a lot of emotion.
Yep, so there's gonna be some stuff that we need to kind of watch and make sure that, uh, people aren't, I guess. Exactly, well vandalizing and also just, there, there's gonna be, there's gonna be some issues, Canes and Carnes will be, there'll be a few issues down there with some of the people that didn't take the buyouts. So it's kind of, if there's any other questions with Joe, like I said, Joe's the lead, he'll, he'll direct the, the foreman to the projects and then there'll be those specific crews. And then Ryan, he estimated the homes and, and, uh.
You'll touch base and.
Yeah, then I oversee over everything, but we, we have a, we have a very clean, nice, unique system with, you know, forty to sixty employees at different times, so. And like, most of them are from Mills County, uh, not all of them, but most of them are.
So my comment yesterday to my guys that they're teaching me this, the construction business, I said, how does a landfill take all the metal and all that? But you sort that out and put that in another truck and then that goes.
Yep, and that was one reason why we probably put the Imogene Bridge in, for an example, because that had a tremendous, tremendous amount of rebar and concrete. It was in a critical area where the Wabash Trace was running. We did that whole thing as people could still bike on the Wabash Trace, that was a heck of an undertaking with the county. That was, that was unbelievable, but that had huge I-beams underneath that, that we kept and took away. So that's, you've got to understand all facets, a lot of these homes will have the I-beams that you need to pull down, you know, the safety measures that you're gonna have to do to pull those things down.
Pull that out and put that in and, and then you get your fee from an iron.
Yep, and then, and then the C and D and which would be your shingles, your siding, your. your interior, furniture, your drywall, that stuff, that's going to get smashed down and put either in a tipper truck, side dump, dump truck, more than likely not dumpsters, um, but the other stuff. Dumpsters were really going to try to commit more to this stuff in Junction.
Do those I-beams off of that?
Off the Imogene Bridge, I have them still because I, I.
They're in a mess of weeds.
Yeah, because I, because they're huge, they're huge and they've got an unbelievable structural.
They don't make those every day.
No, they're, they're, they were mad at me when, because it took a lot more care to take them out versus having a company come in and torch them and cut them in half. I said, no, I want to keep them whole. They're nice, they're very, very nice.
Instead of just kind of being, we kind of lot of bolts.
But, yeah, so.
I think a lot of.
So, you know, but.
How did they know that it was held together?
Yeah, but, well, the, the thing with that, the thing with that one is, is the caretaking, like I said, on the Wabash, Kevin Mayberry was very concerned with the Wabash, it had a concrete falling down onto the trail, so we, the, the rebar in that thing was phenomenal. But these rebar in those newer homes that Mark Hughes Construction built on Canes and Carnes Road, those, those foundations were all poured, they're going to have a phenomenal amount of rebar. There's a lot of, there's a lot of work there.
Kind of like I've been begging Kevin before he left for a Bailey Bridge and he said, you want to tear one of those apart? You go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're not made to be torn apart.
Anybody else have any questions for these guys?
Well, thank you for under, making me understand some of this stuff, Corey, because that's what I was worried that, you know, you, you're, and, and we all do it, we get ourselves thinned out and, and I just didn't realize that.
Yeah, we have quite a few resources.
It will be good.
Good, thank you guys.
Okay. We'll sit back here, guys. Do you look at those?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll wait. Oh, well, got you, got you, got you.
Get that mixed up, that's Carol's. We haven't acted on it yet, but.
That was an action item, but we've, there's not going to be any action taken on it, it's just discussion.
Yeah, 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 I don't actually discuss.
All right, we're a little behind schedule. The next item on the agenda is to award the demolition contract. Um, what do you guys think? You think we're ready? You think we, you want some more time to discuss it, to think it over? I think we need to keep the wheels turning on it, but on the other hand, I, I personally would like to ask a few more questions to some of the other bidders before we, before I make a decision, but if you guys are.
I agree.
Well, I, I think we need to get some things in place we don't have, you know? Tyler wants to make a comment on that or not, why? Up here.
I don't, I mean, like I said, I'm not going to be able to close until we get this contract awarded, but also the asbestos, uh, abatement contract also, so this is not holding up the process. I would prefer that you guys take your time, fully investigate every bid, including the, the two pretty low bids that we've discussed.
I've not had any conversations with them and I would, I would like to.
Neither of those companies and it probably is a good idea to talk with them just to, to their understanding. I would prefer that you take your time and fully investigate everything prior to making the decision, uh, and it's, even if it does end up holding a process by a week or two, that's, that's time well timed, in my opinion. Uh, but the asbestos abatement RFP is going to take probably a couple weeks to get pushed out or to get published and, uh, received on that end of it.
So, so you, um, do you recommend that we hold off this week completely or call for a special meeting or you?
Thursday or Fridays, man, Thursday or Friday is fine. I, I like to keep, I hate this, even though it's only Tuesday next week, it'd be nice if we could meet Thursday or Friday and at least work some things out and, and keep this moving forward. I, I don't want to wait a week at a shot.
Right.
I want to keep it moving.
We just got to keep it rolling.
And then we look at it and then come together at the work session and discuss, see if the decision is satisfied or not.
Are you guys available Friday morning for a?
Should be.
A work session?
Friday morning would work best for me.
Yeah, okay.
Fine.
So.
Now that your homecoming is out, right?
Yes, that homecoming week again, is it?
I don't know, we can come home any week you want.
Normal time?
Um, sure, I don't know, eight fifteen, eight thirty, no, we're not doing six or seven.
So it works better for me.
Yeah.
I say five.
If you want to come early, we can come early.
We'll just have to take our own notes.
You tell us what time, I'll be here.
Will you be crabby at five?
I see you pinning it a little early, yeah. Works for you guys.
Richard, I think she'll be crabby.
I think you might go at eight fifteen and lock out.
I won't be crabby, you say the time, I'll be.
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen Friday morning? Would you guys be available at all during that time to even call in or if we had questions to call you, Alexis or Terry?
I'm always available for you guys, just let me know when.
Five AM on Friday?
Five AM should work, I go, I go to the gym at six thirty AM, so as long as you don't cut into that time, we're good.
All right.
Okay, yeah.
I'm available Friday morning.
I don't know that we would have any questions, but if we do, it'd be nice to, if we called you, to get a, you know, to get an answer that we can keep moving, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, absolutely, I'd be more happy to jump in on the conversation, at least sit in and listen in case you guys have anything. Uh, if you want to do it, do them again, we can do that or, or whenever we're.
We're talking eight fifteen, but, you know, you can chime in.
That's fine.
Whenever, okay, Friday.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you, guys.
I think it's a good idea.
Let's do that in a formal motion, guys. Somebody want to make a motion to?
I make a motion that.
Set a work session.
That we do another session Friday morning, which will be October second at eight fifteen for more discussion on our demolition contracts.
Got a motion in a second to have a work session at eight fifteen Friday morning to, uh, continue this process to get it put to bed. Yeah, no, Richard will bring those.
Richard?
Insult in that role.
You're supposed to bring donuts.
Sold a nut roll, but you know.
So are you going to want that as an action item on Friday as well?
You might as well, I would, I would put discuss formal action, that way we, that if we can and decide then, we'll make it. If not, then we don't have to, but if not, we can put it on Tuesdays. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Eighteen fifteen Friday morning, if individually, we can't do it together, but individually, if you guys want to reach out to any other contractors ahead of time, that might help speed the process up a little bit.
Where is this IR and T, where are they from?
They've, it's all in our, it's all in their information, they're being packaged so we can.
Oh, okay.
Get those, it's in this stack.
Got it.
Will that work?
Sorry, I don't know if you want to put them up and ask and then, so everybody has informed as well or?
Yeah.
Want to do it that way?
What's that? Six, seven.
Well, that one's actually got one.
Well, the, in, in my opinion, the high bids, the high bid, I think we have some qual, we have several qualified contractors, at least two underneath them, and then the one under them didn't fill the, all of them, been packaged out, so I think those two can immediately be eliminated, in my opinion. So I'm, I'm, I'm not going to call them.
I'm just trying to see.
Right, right. There's some questions though, I mean, I don't want to call and talk to Corey and Ryan and not have these guys talk to them, if they want to talk to them or Nixon or anyone else, so it's, I wouldn't want to say I'm doing this one, you're doing that one, if they have questions, call them, just don't do it together.
Their information is out on that, on our.
Right.
Packages.
Right. Okay. All righty, Friday morning it is. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Ryan. Uh, Carol, you want to do these appraisals first or you want to take her first then? Okay. All right.
You are.
Chief Deputy Kim Clark, jailer's deputies request approval for, from probationary to full-time pay increases.
Um, so, um, effective October eighth, I have Bailey Wilson has completed her one year probationary period as a jailer and she's eligible for the raise from thirty-six thousand four ninety-two up to thirty-seven thousand nine zero-six per the union contract.
I'm sorry, thirty-seven one.
Thirty-seven nine zero-six. There's a letter for that one.
From thirty-three.
Thirty-six four ninety-two.
Thirty-six four to thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven nine oh-six.
Fifteen hundred a year.
Thirty-six four ninety-two.
Just do these all in one swoop?
We can, I'll give you, I got two jailers and two deputies, so.
Okay.
Is Bailey a deputy? She is a jailer.
She's a jailer.
Okay.
And then I have, um, effective October twenty-fifth, Claire O'Donnell has completed her one year probationary period and it'll be the same, same numbers for that.
And she's a jailer.
She is.
And then the next two are deputies.
Uh, October twenty-seventh, Draven Sayers has completed his one year probationary.
Sayers.
Sayers, S-A-Y-E-R-S as a deputy, um, and he is eligible for a raise from the salary of fifty-two nine fifty-three to fifty-six five seventy-five.
And that's union?
That is union contract, yes. And then the other one that somehow got overlooked, um, John Spinaugle came as a certified deputy to the sheriff's office and he should have had his probationary raise on May seventh of twenty-twenty. He was eligible for the raise and it's the same, same salary as Dravens.
So are you going back, John?
Uh, they are. That was their mistake, so I think it should be.
May, June, August, yes, Spinaugle's going to get a nice little bonus.
Yeah, Jolene, I called it last week when I was doing mine and I told her, I said, somebody overlooked this and so we.
Did he say something?
He did not, I was.
Did he not know? He, I mean, usually.
You know what? I think we count on the supervisors and the sergeants do that part and I was doing my jailers and noticed that he hadn't been when I was doing mine, so I asked him and they both said, oops. So.
All righty, well, I make a motion for Chief Deputy Kim Clark to, uh, give our full-time
employees their increases by the union contract.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to request for the approval of probationary to full-time pay increases. Is there any discussion?
At least they stay.
Yeah, and they're good.
They are.
Reliable and.
Yep. Come to work. I've, I've got one jailer that she is due for her probationary increase on the ninth and I'm going to extend that for three days, but I don't need your approval for that, so I'm going to leave it there, so.
Any other discussion?
Work on time is tough.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I can read it in your eyes.
Hit them up, get them going.
Yep.
How are you standing in line if any of these walk, is there?
Uh, no, we are, we are actually good. I, um, we have one right now on maternity leave and she should be coming back about the middle of October, so we're, we're, we're full staffed.
Somebody that you can.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're full staffed and she's been on, yeah, she's been on, well, we have been, so, no, I think we got a good group of people that, uh, are working together finally and, and it's working, so.
Good, good, good.
It is. Good job, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Three day.
Be careful.
Thanks, see ya.
Next item on the agenda is determine appraisals for individuals in the buyouts that contested their appraisals.
Yeah, I have been trying for a very long time to get ahold of our committee and sent us emails and finally, um, heard from two of them the other day stating they realized that they had sent a group message on September first between the three of them and nothing came to us, so we were aware of it and both, you know, two of them apologized. Um, Troy, I had not heard a word from him, one way or the other, I've reached out, Troy Dranger, he's the third member on that. Um, I have reached out to him several times, no response, period. So I visited with Tyler and I did one more shot at it the other day, um, just to see if we could get him to come, you know, but we have, um, two and they're both in agreeance that all of the, um, applicants, which were Jeff Reed, Michael Bruce and Paula Zilmer should all, their, their belief is that they should be at the, the appre, the second appraisals amount.
Which is.
As opposed to, so in, um, the Bruce property, our appraiser said two eighty, the new appraisal, the appraisal was three twenty. Uh, Zilmer was one thirty and they approved, they stated one sixty-five. Jeff Reed was at thirty-two, um, they agreed with the county assessment of fifty-two, one thirty-five. So that's.
Jeff's the one that came in and talked to you guys and asked if we could just use the tax assessed value instead of him having to pay for another appraisal.
Of those three?
Yep.
There was another one, but I am not with that from them in regards.
We can handle this right now? What do I want to hear?
Well, I don't know, so in the form of a motion, you stated that we are.
The appraisals that were contested.
Either approving or disproving the decision of the appraisal review committee.
Approving appraisal review, would that be committee?
Yeah.
Got that.
Yeah, I got it.
I disapprove of, uh, Jeff. I think, I, he's always kept that ground great, um, and I underst, you know, there's no other shed on there.
You said you disapprove it?
There is, there, yeah, there's a drive show with his, but they approved the higher one of what the county said you guys were willing to look at, which was his assessed value of the fifty-two.
Yeah, okay, but Mike Bruce from two eighty and it jumped to three twenty?
You guys all had copies of the appraisals and what?
Paula Zilmer for one thirty to one sixty-five, all there was was just a little house on there.
Yeah, but they didn't feel that they, um, there's three acres and a house, um, they think that the one sixty-five is fair. Let's see what the other one.
Yes.
Yeah, the county appraiser used a comp that, okay, because.
Generally, the appraisal company that we selected for this project was also selected by another county that I'm intimately aware of and the work product that was turned around in both counties is not great.
Well, and this one says.
If given the option to rely on a different appraisal, I would select that appraisal and I'm perfectly fine stating that in public meeting, it's, I'm not real happy with the result and the work product that was generated by the selected contractor.
Okay, and it also says the county appraiser used a comp that was the, this is on the, uh, Zilmer property, the county appraiser used a comp that was the house where the Heber Dollar General is now located, so there is limited information available on the beacon and on the property as it is now gone, um, so that was one of the concerns with, um, that was one Chad's concern and then.
What do you think, guys?
We have a motion, so.
Oh, you did? I didn't hear that.
Well, she's dis.
She said she disapproved, I didn't realize you made a motion.
Now that it was explained to me, okay, I second it, it's fine.
You made the motion then?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't catch that, sorry.
Appraisal review.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second, correct? To approve Bruce from two eighty to three twenty, Zilmer from one thirty to one sixty-five, Reeve from thirty-two to fifty-two one thirty-five. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Sorry, I was out of line.
Good.
All righty.
Thanks.
I told Sandy and Jim Hughes to get in touch with you regarding the purchase, so I'll get you legal if they need it. If not, Jim, if you had a deed, I can pull that. I'll probably, yeah, just pull the deed. Two pieces. Make sure you get both.
Yep.
Yep. Thank you. Carol Robertson.
Yeah.
You are up.
More staff?
I'm not getting business taken out, so I'll be back into request, and we have been graciously awarded another grant, and between the two grants that we received, we'll pay for this temporary office staff that we are needing to get everything done so that we can get everything out in the corrected October fifth deadline. Plus, we're going to have to look at some other options as well, as far as in office, as far as some of the things I didn't think about. If we're really busy with people coming in during those times, we're going to need somebody, probably not in our office, to be cleaning down all the counters, cleaning down the counters after every single day. So that's another thing that we're looking at, and I know some of the other auditors are using that, but my request for the just, the temp, the one that I'm doing right now is Linda Goose. I'm paying her twelve dollars an hour. She will, she started actually working on September twenty-third, and will be until the thirty-first on an as-needed basis. I mean, she works maybe three, four hours a day at the most, so, and then she works my election, too.
Good.
So she's helping with the test X and F thing right now.
Very nice.
Well, you, I guess, I'll make a motion, and I will discuss it. I'll make a motion that we hire Linda Goose at twelve dollars an hour for temporary help.
You got a second?
I second it.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Hey, do you want to just list that you, in the motion, I would amend it if you want me to, to, instead of coming back and doing this, have her have the authority to hire another?
I don't want to give her any authority.
I second it.
Power. How's that power?
I don't know. I don't know what power or authority, which is better.
Well, what I'm looking at, I can see this coming. One day, you're going to be standing here not doing it, and the next day, you're just, it is, the doors are going to open, and I think it's going to be just totally crazy.
It is, and I'm really concerned about how we're going to handle.
And I think you ought to have the power to go ahead and, and line someone up and, you know, have them in the wings waiting to come in.
Well, that would be helpful, I think, to do that, because we're going over the listening right now, what we need to do, of course, we also are going to have to hire someone to clean the places after we're done, you know, using them.
I could at least do that. Clean. I can spray and clean.
You're going to be here every day?
Probably not.
Yeah.
I see.
Um, that may be somewhat of a problem, you know, and, yeah, because that person will also be helping.
Yeah.
Whatever you think.
Are you all ready to, Carol?
Yes.
You know, amend your motion?
I amended to where we give the auditor authority.
I second it. You're going to have your hands full.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the auditor to hire temporary office staff with care of funding as needed. Does that sound good? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next one is what I have here. It is authorizing the auditor, auditor authorized chair to sign the CTCL grant dispersment.
This is the Center for Tech and Civic Life. They, they, for the COVID nineteen response grant program, all US election, local election jurisdictions, jurisdictions, it was backed by a generous two hundred and fifty million dollar contribution. CTC will provide grants to local election jurisdictions across the county to help ensure you have the staffing, training, and equipment necessary for the November, February, eleventh, voter, and vote in a safe and timely way. There are restrictions, obviously, in there as to what you can and can't use it for. We had to go in and apply, and so far, it was like a, it was not a huge, we had to put in our election budget, how many people we have on staff currently to handle, what we, you know, are doing, and they have, within almost forty-eight hours, we were approved, and the minimum that you could get was five thousand. I believe ours was fifteen.
Fifty-six thirty-five.
Yeah, and some of the big counties got some pretty big bucks, over a hundred or thousands, but they're obviously a lot bigger counties than ours.
Who are you reading, Richard?
Well, my, the, the thing, Lonnie, I passed over the Lonnie item, and Lonnie copied it. He's not going to copy it.
Read it out.
Lonnie had it, and he's passing it back to me. So that is what we have, and one of the things, we can deploy additional staff and/or technology improvements to expedite and improve mail ballot. So.
Okay, question, you know, why would kind of discuss this?
Yep.
Okay, on, on voting day, are you going to have to have a cleaner?
Well, we've already discussed that we're doing our trainings this week, and we're telling them, I mean, we're trying to have enough people there that one of them will be the cleaner. We'll have a greeter, a greeter and a cleaner, so, yeah. I, so that we can make sure that.
They can buy their hand? I'm sorry.
Anyway, we're, we're letting them work that out between them who, you know, who they want. You know, I've also thought, considering contacting the high school, too. I haven't heard anything from Maria, but to see if, you know, maybe we could get some high school students to be the greeters, so to speak, to make sure more people fill in line and stuff.
How about the young Republicans to the, that come to the central committee? Maybe they would.
You have to have the young Democrat.
Are they in, are they in high school?
Aren't they?
I don't know. I, I don't know. Um, I don't, you know.
I'm just thinking.
I mean, they can, they can always volunteer, and there was a, an outreach, I think, I saw, and we've received a lot of people from the Secretary of State's willing to work our elections, and then we also had a crash on us as soon as they signed up, and then said, oh, wait a minute, no, I can't now. Looks like, okay, you knew what you were applying for. Why didn't you apply if you can't work? But, so anyway, we, I thought, I was, I'm going to see where we are after we finish this week with training, and then contact the schools, and I can talk, contact both the political parties to make, see if there's any students. I usually go with, with the high school students first.
Right.
Just so that, you know, they get credit. We can't pay them, but they can get credit.
Is there, do they take civic courses?
Yes.
That would be a great.
Well, that's what Maria teaches, so.
Oh, oh, that's who you.
You know, but last year, we only got like.
Yeah, not many.
No, it's sad. Anyway, that's.
Because I think that's a great idea. Get the youth involved. Yeah.
I've had some good years when I've had a lot of kids that are interested, and then I've had some years, like last year, where, dude, like, no, I didn't even offer to pay them last year, and it's like, apparently that didn't.
I bet, Carol, you would get some good results this year, since this is a big.
Yeah. Hopefully.
Shall we approve it, guys?
I approve. I make a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to authorize the chair to sign the CTCL grant dispersment. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Done. Mr. Norris.
Yes.
You are up.
Come on up.
Well, thank you for having me. Not sure what Carol told you about my request, but, uh, yeah, I wanted to use the parking lot here for a little rally.
Right.
If possible.
And when, when is your plan?
It's next Thursday. It's the eighth of October, and it'd be at five thirty PM. And so I've been doing these, these, they're called drive-ins, so we need a drive-in parking lot because we're doing them COVID safe, so people come in their car, and I talk to them over, over the radio in their car through a local transmitter, and so we would need a parking lot in a green space, essentially. I've been doing it over about thirty-some odd communities now across the district, so.
Any courthouses you've worked at?
Yeah, I've done one in Clarinda, and then I did it in Mount Air. Next couple of weeks from now, they'll be doing it, and Bedford, Hidlow.
That was my biggest fear, is letting a Democrat, not a Republican or a Republican, not a Democrat, you know, I don't want to get that started here.
Just let Taffel come do it, too, if it's a good.
Right, right, right.
I got your team, but.
Have you tried, considered our beautiful park, that they could park more? Because you're limited.
Yeah, I did, I did a rally earlier at the amphitheater parking lot, because I was supposed to do it in the green space there, in your, your Sharp Street Park there, but they were doing the construction at that time. So I did one there before.
Oh.
I kind of like it to be so that everybody can see it happening. I know that's none of your concern, I guess, but it's, I like that it's here centrally located, so if people are going by, you know, I've had a lot of people just see the signs and come and talk to me, and so I think it's important that it's open to folks being able to stop by and talk as well, rather than know about it ahead of time, so.
And you're saying amphitheater is what you were the last time. I think she was saying the main.
The main park.
Could possibly stand in front of one of the, the.
Like with the history.
Museum is, and then all the parking lot there would be able to.
Yeah, that's where we had it planned last time.
Oh, okay.
They were doing that construction on the road end, you know, and there was some miscommunication with the Parks Board on when they were going to start that construction, but, so I'd like to bring it centrally located here this time, if possible, but, and I don't think Parks Board meets again until the second Tuesday or something like that, so.
Yeah, I'm one of our one industries on that board, but I don't know when they meet for sure either, but I'm sure they could meet, but, I guess, you are limited, there's not that many spaces.
Well, I tell you the truth, we, we only usually get about ten cars or so, but.
That's why you're a big crowd.
That's why I like it where we can get more people just seeing it, so they can stop by if they want to, because it is, you know, we're doing it as a drive-in to make, to encourage folks to be safe, and then come in a, kind of a unique way, but a lot of folks just end up coming in their lawn chairs and spreading out anyway, so.
Oh, so they can still hear you, even if they're not in the car?
Yeah, I have a speaker as well.
Oh, I was just thinking, everybody had to be in the car, like a drive-in movie.
Yeah, I mean, we, it's, that was the whole idea of it, is to encourage people to stay separated and in their own vehicles, but a lot of people, yeah, I mean, it might be cold in a week and a half from now, but, you know, a lot of people like to soak up as much good time as they can, so they get out in their lawn chairs anyway, but, so I need a parking lot and then a green space.
Well.
I don't know, guys.
I think it's a grand idea and stuff.
I think it's a.
I have a problem with opening this up, and maybe you can understand, we allow you, and then we have everybody coming before us. Well, you allowed him to do it, why can't we do it? Uh, you know.
And you need to allow.
We have to?
Well, if you're going to allow one, you're going to have to allow anybody that acts, just for that sort of thing.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, usually it's non-critical or whatever that is in the ground, but if it's been done in other, you know, other county courthouses have done it, and you could certainly take that in the minutes, then, you know, and I would assume that if the Republicans wanted to do it, then it would probably, you know, a hundred percent. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I know. It's, I know it's public, public land, so it's political or non-critical, however you guys want to do it. I just, I know it's a great spot, and it'd be welcoming to folks traveling around to stop and be, you know, involved if they wanted.
It's after hours, so that's, you know, it'd be a good thing. I mean, we don't go, but the, yeah, communications department, right? What are we doing on?
Plus, I mean, I'm sure Taffel is not going to stop my asking, anyway. So you're all right there, Richard?
Who's he, guys?
I'll make a motion to allow, but just that, well, anybody else, they, they have to come and ask the board, you know.
If they can do that. I second it.
We've got a motion and a second to allow Mr. Norris to use the courthouse drive on October eighth at five thirty PM until.
Usually at that hour. That's going to be down by.
Six thirty PM. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You're not bringing any other candidates with you?
No, nothing, no.
Not that it makes any difference.
Right. Whatever, whatever happened with Goose, his election, did he ever get on the ballot, like?
No, they.
Okay. If anybody wants to come and join me or listen or speak, I'd love to have you.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Enjoy your day. Yeah, I know, I know. You walked in, I was like, oh, I need to go, I need to get through on.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.